Consent items, I'll call on our city clerk, Vernay Larson.
Mr. Mayor, council members, tonight for your approval, I have the city council minutes of October 6th of 25, the planning commission meeting minutes of October 8th, 25, as a draft, the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission minutes of October 13th, 25, the Blue Cross Blue Shield of Minnesota sponsorship funding for community growth-led special events, the accounts payable report of 10/2, 25 through 10/14, 25, and for your information, I have the review planning commission applicant Stacy Peterson, finance report through 9/30, 25, the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Finance Report through for August 2025, and the directors' reports.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. You got a motion and a second discussion, Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As reading through the reports, I found the planning report very interesting, and I'd like to pull that and have our planning director, Christopher, present a little bit about that American Planning Association State Conference that took place here in Wilmer.
All right. Anything else? Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Shultes.
Aye.
And Ask.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That passes. Tom, go ahead, we'll have Christopher come up to the podium.
Yeah, I found the, Mr. Mayor, I found the American Planning Association took place September 24th through 26th here in Wilmer quite interesting, and as the host here, I'd love to hear what all they did and a little more information about it.
All right. Councilmember Gilbertson, thank you for the opportunity and for really focusing on the American Planning Association State Conference. So every year, the state of Minnesota, American Planning Association, Association Chapter hosts a statewide conference where all planners and students as well are invited. This year, Wilmer did host, and we hosted for about 300 planners from all across Minnesota. It was the first time that a lot of planners even came to the southwestern portion of the state, and the first time that the conference came to this area. It was really impactful to, one, have the conference here for a local economic opportunity too, so a lot of planners went into our small businesses in downtown to eat and to karaoke. They tried to get me to karaoke, I did not do it. But it was very nice even here, then shopping at Primrose and other stores here. Some even drove as far as to Bruton to just take a look at some of the natural landscape that's happening and some of the development. And there's also a burger stand, a pop-up burger stand that was in Bruton and heard a lot of feedback about that. But it was really great to host a lot of planners and my colleagues here in the city. And we hosted and co-facilitated two sessions. One was shaping a community-led vision, which really focused on comprehensive planning for smaller cities. And then we did an interactive charrette for downtown, so how to revitalize downtown. Their attendees gained insight into our current conditions, and they gave recommendations that they actually implemented in their areas. Though it was geared towards planning-specific, a lot of attendees were engineers and consultants as well. And so couldn't have done this without the APA board, which I sit on for the state chapter, but I could not have done it without the conference center, who ran logistics, the convention, the Wilmer Lakes Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, our city staff that assisted, Administrator Valian actually led the bike tour, so one of the mobile tours that are perfectly aligned with the ribbon-cutting celebration of our trailhead by the civic center. So I didn't do it alone, did it with the board and so many organizations and city staff here, and I want to thank you all for taking the time just to hear about it. Thank you.
Do you have any more questions?
I don't think so. I know that they did a tour of the Midwest Technology Campus, and we had about 20 of them stop through that area, and they were all very impressed to see we've revitalized that portion of our city versus just tear down those buildings. So it's neat to see them come through.
And we made good use of the Wilmer bikes.
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes, Audrey.
If I can just comment too, I participated in the ribbon-cutting out there, and it was really fun to see all of them. They asked lots of good questions. I think they were very impressed with our trailhead and the bike paths and how we were working on additional ones. And so it was really great to have them experience our community and go on tour through the campus, et cetera. So, and it was a nice opportunity while they were here, so.
Others made comments to me in regards to our civic center, our event center, the turf, artificial turf, and the trailhead. So I think we impressed some of them anyway. All right. I need a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
We got a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Shultes.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
And Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That passes. I assume we don't have any, okay? So we'll go to the approval of plans and specifications and authorize advertisement for bids on the Wilmer Connect, and I'll call on Kyle Box, our operations.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight's agenda item for your consideration is the plans and specifications with authorization to bid Phase 1 of the fiber optic installation project, known as Wilmer Connect. This action item is accumulation of three-plus years of work. What began as an idea to bring fiber to the industrial park quickly evolved into what it is today. Our work revealed that the efforts regarding broadband access across the country, state, counties, and other municipalities have been far more expansive than initially considered in the summer of 22. Throughout the project's life cycle, we have questioned every aspect of validity. Because of our cautious approach, we have taken our time, we have done our due diligence, we have mitigated risks to the best of our ability, and we've had the opportunity to partner with industry leaders, most of whom have no financial interest in our project, but strongly believe in these projects. This work has been done to identify weaknesses, design the network for scalability and reliability, and build public-private relationships that aim to deliver fast and reliable service on city-owned infrastructure. Lastly, we gained an understanding of how our city is served, what barriers to entry exist, and what opportunities become available to residents, businesses, and the city itself. Wanted to take an opportunity with you, council, Mr. Mayor, to just go through the agenda item here real quick and provide you with a project recap, I would say, starting really in May of this year to current today, review the action item request, and provide you with the project timeline. As of late last night, we started collecting, I'll back up. First, we started collecting pre-orders in May, May 2nd of this year, through October 19th is the numbers that we'll be talking about today. So current, 596 total pre-orders have been registered on the Wilmer Connect site. Out of that, breakout, Phase 1 accounts for 235, 221 in Phase 2, and 111 in Phase 3. Even though that we are promoting only Phase 1 as an action item tonight, we still thought it was important to open up this pre-signup portion for the entire period, for the entire city. Now, if you add those numbers up, you'll know they do not equal 596, it equals 567. The reason for the 29-count difference is that we do collect some information for residents that live and businesses that are outside the city limits for information purposes only. We have no plans at this time to expand beyond the city limits, but it is helpful information for us to collect and evaluate how the city moves and grows into the future. Going back to Phase 1, that 235 number. Our year-one goal for a full year with a Phase 1 build was 212. It was a 212 signups. That was a 7% take rate that you saw earlier this year on our performa. Now, out of that 235 pre-signups, we estimate to convert about 80% of those to actual orders. That's pretty, an industry-standard number that we continue, that we see pretty consistently or have been told pretty consistently. So we'll continue to push those pre-signups throughout this year. Additionally, some project updates that we wanted to provide you with were some events that both our ISP partners, our internet service providers, and the city that attended and presented at throughout the summer, including mailers, attending WilmerFest, county fair, door knocking, advertising, again, Rockin' Robins, and the opportunity to present at the community center, attending the Minnesota Public Broadband Alliance meeting earlier this year, and also attending Welcoming Week. As we move through the project, we have had the opportunity to partner with an organization called Community Broadband Action Network, or C-Ban. What we would like to do is start a champion program, and partnering with C-Ban to roll out a champion program. This program is a time-limited community sprint that equips volunteers with messaging and support to drive up signups for Wilmer Connect. With that, we'll be looking for volunteers to join the champion program, deliver measurable leads, and tell the community on why this project is important. And I wanted to provide you with some municipal updates from not only Minnesota, but from across the country as well. And this information comes from the Institute for Local Self-Reliance. I know I had shared a map with you and shared some numbers on municipal networks throughout the country, starting in the low 600s, and then earlier this year, we were at 707. That number has now jumped again to 806 municipal networks across the country. What I find very interesting is that between 2001 and 2008, an average of six new municipal networks came online per year. And in contrast, over the last 10 years, that average has jumped to 15 new networks a year, even during the COVID-19 pandemic. Municipal networks serving their neighbors are also increasing. Utah's Utopia Fiber serves 22 different communities. EPB Fiber in Tennessee serves nine. And in the state of Vermont, a new public-private partnerships between 200 different communities will see an explosion of publicly-owned fiber infrastructure. But it's not all about size. Iowa, Massachusetts, and Tennessee boast the highest number of municipal networks in the nation in respect to their states. And what we're pursuing is open access. Open access networks would supercharge competition, they benefit households, and are also on the rise. And today, almost 200 communities are served by an open access network. At its core, this is an infrastructure project that would be owned by the city of Wilmer. Partnerships have been established with private internet service providers to operate on the network to provide a high-quality service to its end users. Tonight's action item, if approved, will initiate a timeline for receiving, reviewing, and bringing back bids to the city council for further consideration on December 15th. As you can see on your screen, we outline that timeline, again, with a highlight or an underline of the action item on December 15th. And if at that time, council proceeds with accepting and awarding those bids, bonding and construction for Phase 1 would commence in quarter 1 and quarter 2 of 2026 with substantial completion targeted to be completed by quarter, first part of quarter 4 and 26, with final completion of Phase 1 punch list items being completed July 1st of 2027. In closing, before, closing tonight's action marks the transition from many years of planning to tangible progress for Wilmer Connect. By approving the plans and authorizing bids for Phase 1, the city positions itself to deliver reliable city-owned broadband infrastructure that will serve residents, businesses, and the community for decades to come. This milestone reflects Wilmer's commitment to innovation, connectivity, and long-term community investment. Mr. Mayor, I will stop there for any questions.
Get a motion first.
So moved.
A motion, how about a second? A second. I, as elected officials, we share a collective responsibility in the success of our projects. And our decisions at this table are not individual actions, but a demonstration of our unity, our leadership, and support for our city and its future. Healthy deliberation, challenging questions, and due diligence are welcome and remain a core factor in how we govern our city. Wilmer Connect project is of the utmost importance. It's an innovative endeavor that, if approved, will demand our collective commitment and support. And it's a project that we, as the governing body of the city, must see through to its completion. If the city council is in favor of advancing Wilmer Connect project, it's important to remember that this isn't the end. There will be peaks and there will be valleys along the way. And as elected, as the elected body for the city, I urge you to be ready to support and stand behind the decisions we make as a unified council for Wilmer Connect. So any discussion, Audrey?
Thank you, Mayor Reese. Just a question about the bid process. When we're building streets, et cetera, we kind of have an estimate of what we think the bid might be, and sometimes it comes in below and above. Do we have that same kind of process in place right now? So that if the bids came in higher than we were expecting, we could take a look at them at that time, whether we should proceed or not?
Absolutely. That's a great question. Councilmember Nelson, I believe that number is included in the packet in the action item request under budgetary items. I believe that number is coming in just under 7.8 million for Phase 1 construction, which includes the trunk lines and the network operation center as well, to and from Phase 1.
Okay, so.
That would be the engineered estimate.
Okay, so that's just the clarification that that's the amount. If the bids come in, we would proceed with Phase 1, so that's a total?
Yes, that's, council would have the opportunity to accept or deny any bid that would come back to you.
Includes everything?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Steve?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Box had a couple of questions, and one Director Odens might have to answer. The first one, what do you think, what is the date, last date to sign up for Phase 1? Or how will a contractor know what the total number is for Phase 1? Do we do a change order if people sign up late, or is it a unit price that's going to be in the bid, or how is that going to work?
Oh, that's a good question, Councilmember Gardner. We have not come up with a final stop date on when that cutoff date would be. Our goal always would, if the project proceeds, would be to sign up and connect as many people as fast as possible. In the project estimate, there is a certain number, a percentage of, okay, we've got 235 signups today. We'll use a number like that, estimate maybe 20, 30% more, whatever that final number would be, and that would be built into that bid price based of what we've seen from industry standards on what that construction cycle brings for signups. There would be a bid, a unit price per connection as well. That number escapes me off the top of my head, but I know Mr. Moorhead from Hometown Fiber might be able to answer that a little quicker than I can.
I assume it's going to be a bid price on a unit form, or a unit price on a bid form, or something like that.
Yep. That should be identified in, as an example in the resolution in your packet, how the items are bid out.
Do you know how much we have spent to date on this project?
Starting, and the first contract council approved was November 7th of 2022. Through this, through current, is $1,100,432.74. That has come out of the industrial park fund.
So approximately 1.1 million.
Just over 1.1 million.
And my last question, again, maybe Director Odens will have to answer this. What does this do to our bonding capacity, or what is our bonding capacity as a city? What does it do to our bonding capacity for our ability to do road improvements? And then what happens if this project fails? What happens to our bond then?
Yep. So for our bond capacity, we would be, we're anticipating or projecting to go for general obligation tax abatement bonds. There are different rules that go around. General obligation bonds are how we bond for our streets, but this would not impact our general obligation, our street bond capacity. Tax abatement bonds would limit us on a certain amount of projects, maybe like a, any abatements that we would do in the future, tax abatements we would do in the future. That's also a funding mechanism for a community center. The rules around general obligation tax abatement bonds are typically 10% of the taxable market value of the city. So right around 20 million is what we're estimating for taxable market value, or tax capacity, excuse me, for the city of Wilmer in 2026. So the most we would be able to levy for is $2 million in a single year, if that answers your question. It would not impact our street, our ability to levy for streets. If the project did not receive enough revenues to pay off those debt obligation costs, the backstop is property taxes. However, we are working on another funding mechanism that we would like to iron out a little bit closer and provide more information on. But that would not impact the property taxes. Still ironing those details out. But the final backstop would be property taxes if all else fails.
And what do we anticipate? I think, I understand that we're going to not pay anything on these bonds for the first set amount of time, correct?
Correct. The goal would be to push off principal payments only for three years to build up revenues and subscribers.
What does debt service look like after that, for those that aren't familiar?
Just under $700,000 a year.
Thank you.
I believe, I will verify that.
I believe you.
Any further discussion, Audrey?
Yes, I feel like I should know this, but I'm going to ask anyway. On the Phase 1, there is a blue outline, and then there's a line that goes over to the network operation center. There's some blue lines that go a little bit further. Is that parcel still being considered to be included? Or is that just lines to get to the NOC?
If we're looking, if thinking of the same document, Councilmember Nelson, those would be the trunk lines or the ways that we would be able to deliver that internet from the NOC to Phase 1. And I believe there is four different lines on that map.
Yes.
To create redundancy.
Okay, but it's not saying that we could include that area?
No, that's a great question. I think it's something that the council should strongly consider is that if there are clusters of, or areas of town now, if there's an opportunity for us to move and go to that location, I think that's something that we should strongly consider. Again, it's connecting as many people as fast as possible. Now, we put together a map, a boundary, because we needed to be able to identify phases of the project since this wasn't going to be bid all at once. Now, we retain the flexibility to move that boundary at any given time. So I think we should be flexible, but stay close to that Phase 1 boundary as close as possible because there will be costs to go out and do that work. But there might be some trade-off if a portion of Phase 1 does not get built, or there's no signups, or no interest at this time. We may be able to take those resources and move to another part of the community in close proximity to where we're already at, and make that connection.
Okay, thank you.
Any else? Rick?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So we've got 9,000 parcels in the city right now, entire city.
Just, yeah, a little under 10,000, yep.
We got 596 that said they might want to sign up.
Correct.
And it costs 7 million for Phase 1, 7 or 8 million for 2, probably more for Phase 3. Looks like it's a bigger area.
Yeah, I believe the, Councilmember Fagerly, I believe the estimates for Phase 1 construction are the highest because it's the construction of the network operation center as well as putting in those main trunk lines. Phase 2 and Phase 3 right now are estimated to be 6.8, just under 7 million.
And if a provider came into town and wanted to put it in themselves, that would be a cost to them.
To put the physical infrastructure in?
Yeah.
Correct.
They wouldn't be charging us.
Correct.
And of the 596 people that'll sign up maybe, what are we going to get off that?
Oh, that's a great question. So that's what we will have ironed out before you would be asked to consider any bids if this action item was to even go through. Right now, we are still in negotiations with those ISPs with an understanding that everyone is under the same understanding that in order for this project to work, the city needs to bring in X amount of revenue to make sure that property taxes would not be impacted. And that's a goal that the city shares and the ISP share, is to make sure that this project is viable and successful. I would imagine, my anticipation to have those service-level agreements done, or SLAs, is to have those wrapped up and finalized and ready for action on December 15th as well, with the same goal in mind that we would be bringing in, the city would have enough revenue to come in to cover its costs.
Okay, so do you think the other providers in town know, or doesn't stand still?
No, I do not.
Okay. My example is, I was with Spectrum in my house. I was paying $275 a month for internet and TV. I cut it off three months ago. Now they're saying I can get it for $30 a month for internet, 40. forty for TV, three-year guarantee. My office, I have Windstream. And they reduced my fees. So they're not gonna stand still and let us, the city, take over.
Yep.
And then I noticed you never said there was a community in Minnesota that has this.
Okay.
Is there?
Open access?
Yeah.
No, there is not.
Okay.
No, there are Buffalo Fiber, Monticello Fiber, RS Fiber. Uh, those are all different co-op, different versions of municipal-owned fiber networks. I had an opportunity to speak with RS Fiber, uh, their board, uh, board member, uh, the city of Fairfax, um, had conversations with them and they, um, it's a complicated issue nonetheless. A lot of the original people aren't necessarily there anymore. But what, one of the key, key things that I learned or took away from the conversation was that I, I, what I asked from them was, would you do the project again? And do you, is your community, does your board see it as a value to, to the people that it serves? And every single time, it was absolutely yes. Now, their revenue model is a little bit different than ours. Uh, they are paying those, they are having to pay, that pay that debt obligation tax, but the infrastructure is invaluable. Now, if they choose to sell at some point, uh, somebody's gonna find that, uh, find that infrastructure very valuable. Um, but I also asked the question, um, to the board member if, and I don't know if she speaks for the entire board, but at least from her perspective, is that, uh, there is, there is not going to be, or there isn't a, any talk or action item for the cooperative to go away. This wants to be, continue to be owned by this cooperative of ten cities and dozens of townships and without those, throughout the counties. Uh, Buffalo Fiber, for example, they are an ISP. Uh, it's municipal-owned fiber, the, the city is an ISP itself. Uh, they are moving full steam ahead with phase two. Um, uh, their project has been successful in the eyes of being able to expand, connecting with residents and getting businesses signed up, uh, similar to the city of Monticello, which was talked about several times throughout this project. Um, earlier this year, I believe they laid another twelve hundred miles of fiber uh, to get other expansion and more connections made. Now, they did sell to, uh, Arvic, uh, as that runs their network, but the city still owns the infrastructure. They own the network, or they own the infrastructure and Arvic runs on that network. So there's different, what I'm getting at, Councilmember Fagerly and the county, or city council is, there are many different models and different ways that you can look and evaluate and how you want to proceed with a project like this. Uh, just on the numbers I was sharing earlier today, uh, that eight hundred and six number I shared, only two hundred of those eight hundred and six are open access models. This is the model that we feel works best for the city of Wilmer. It's city-owned infrastructure. We're providing a, a marketplace or an avenue for private business to operate on that infrastructure and provide service to its customers. Uh, at the same time, it's a, uh, potential to, has the potential to generate revenue to come back to the city. It's a one-time infrastructure investment in our eyes. I mean, one-time in the sense of you won't have to be digging up fiber or conduit the next thirty or forty years. Now, there'll be end equipment that'll have to get updated over time. And as technology evolves, yes. Um, but this is the model that we've put through. Hometown Fiber has evaluated, uh, many different scenarios, many different models, and this is what we ultimately ended up on.
So when was the last time you talked with Monticello?
It would be at the, um, I, I was on, uh, the letter that was submitted by the former city administrator that was presented at a work session, I believe, in March. And then I was on a call with them for the, uh, earlier this summer, earlier this spring was the last time I was able, got an update on that specific project.
Because I talked with the Arvic employee at a job site.
Okay.
A few weeks ago. He said they're buying everything from Monticello.
Okay, that's news to me.
So I don't know what's true.
Okay, I'll absolutely look into that.
They were getting out of it as soon as the bond was paid.
Okay.
Oh, you brought up, uh, seven hundred thousand dollars. That's a yearly payment just for the bond payment?
Yes, uh, yeah, I, yes, approximately, six hundred and eighty thousand or something like that.
And then estimate-wise, we would be paying another two hundred and twenty thousand to, uh, Hometown to run it?
Hundred ninety-six, I believe.
So we're looking about a million dollars.
Mm-hmm.
So, and our cut would be about fifteen dollars. I'm just ballparking it for sure. So basically, we're gonna need four thousand plans just to make our payments before the city would make any money.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so our, the way we've structured the pro forma, and this is like I, I mentioned, Councilmember Butterfield is still working with the ISPs, but in order for us to be comfortable, profitable, profitable is probably the wrong word, but comfortable in making sure that we are making our, our obligation payments without increasing the taxes, is probably closer to that sixty, forty split of revenue, or of what those end, what your final bill would be. Uh, so sixty percent would be coming back to the city. Now, we won't use a percentage in our, our final document. We'll put a flat dollar amount in, but that's the number that right now I feel comfortable with, of going forward with to make sure that we have enough revenue coming in, uh, to make sure those obligation costs are paid off. Now, I also wanna, also wanna point out in our, on our financial model that we don't anticipate having, our goal is to have a forty percent take rate throughout the entire city. So we have ten thousand parcels in town, four thousand is our goal. And when we get to that four thousand level, or even shy of that four thousand level, we start to generate enough revenue, uh, to making sure that, um, to make sure that that's not a scenario that we want to put ourselves in. Uh, if phase one is built all by itself and phase two doesn't happen, phase three doesn't happen, that timeline stretches out even further. Uh, and property taxes would be used, uh, to make those to obligation payments. So I want to make that explicitly clear. Um, that phase two is really, uh, really needed because, uh, that's where a, another large portion of the city is, um, re- residential cluster, a lot more residential units in, in phase two as well. Not saying phase one can't be profitable, it'll just take a lot longer to get there.
But then when we go to phase two, we'll, we'll be adding another seven hundred thousand dollars for principal and interest too, correct?
Correct, so like I had mentioned, I'm sorry, Mr. Gardner.
We'll need about thirty-five hundred in phase one, another, you know, thirty-five hundred in phase two.
Yeah, so I, as I had mentioned earlier, we won't be making principal payments for the first three years on each of those bond issuances. So what that allows us to do is build up a bank and, and add, so, uh, build up a, a reserve of money and continue to have revenue or end users sign up on the program, um, to add to that, to make sure that we're at that sustainable level.
And then my other portion of this would probably go towards Leslie. You know, we talked about houses, business getting hooked up. And if property value is gonna go up over, over this. I have a friend in Spicer, has the fiber through TDS. The county city hasn't up their property tax for him having fiber. Is the city gonna be pushing the county to do that here in Wilmer? Or we're gonna be running, you know, like not an upgrade to your house?
I, at this time, I really couldn't answer that for you, but we will check in to.
Earlier this spring, last time you said you were looking at up in the property taxes because it was an amenity going to the property. One, Spicer isn't doing that. County hasn't done it over there. Is Wilmer gonna be pushing for it?
Now, you have to realize Spicer's with TDS has been there for a long time. So I don't know what their property taxes were at the time it went in because it would not show year after year like that on a line.
Well, then we should find out, you know, if our property taxes are gonna go up because some people may not do it.
It's not, it's a value thing. So it's not a line item on the property taxes.
But if the city's gonna be pushing the county to raise everybody's property tax that has this?
These property taxes still are, have to be, the assessor still has a line that they have to meet within the state for property values. So it's not us pushing this assessor to increase property values. They still have to match what is in the state guidelines for assessing properties. And if that is one of their guidelines, that's what they would do. I can't answer that directly.
The city won't be going, county pushing it to increase it?
Yep.
Any other discussion, questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Gardner?
No.
Fagerly?
No.
Davis?
Aye.
Butterfield?
No.
Sholdes?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Gilbertson?
Aye.
Five ayes, three noes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council.
Next, I'll call on our city clerk for unpaid utility charges as a lien.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Um, Minnesota, or Wilmer City Code allow, section sixteen, one twenty-seven allows for unpaid utility bills to be presented to the, um, as a lien on real estate, on the real property. And the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission offered owners the right to request an appearance before the commission to make objections to their payments. After holding a meeting, the Municipal Utilities adopted Resolution forty-three on October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and are now asking my office, city clerk's office, to certify those unpaid utilities to, as a lien on their real property. Tonight, I'm asking the council to adopt a resolution in the amount of, to pass up sixteen properties in the amount of fourteen hundred and, fourteen thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and seventeen cents to be certified over to the county auditorage for collection along with their other taxes for two thousand and twenty-six. So moved. Sorry.
We've got a motion to adopt a resolution approving unpaid utility charges be certified against the real property. Questions, discussion, Rick?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. The city staff are the ones that did the mowing, trimming, whatever at these.
This isn't mowing, this is you unpaid utility bills.
Utility, okay.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
One car, right.
Questions, Mayor?
Yes, Steve?
Do you know, have utilities been cut off from these properties? Are they still receiving services even though they're unpaid?
I think we have a cold weather rule that applies.
I mean, the cold weather rule just went into a, has.
It's just started, right.
This, in theory, has all happened. For the point, we're putting a lien on a property, it seems like we should be well in front of the cold weather rule.
I can't tell you how long this, these bills have been unpaid.
That's fine.
They, I guess we don't get that information from them?
Yeah, I believe it's, it's a mixture.
Okay, all right, thanks.
It's a mixture of both, is what was stated at the utility meeting.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
Sholdes?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Gilbertson?
Aye.
And Gardner?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of Jimmy P's LLC on sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor licenses. City clerk, Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. On September twenty-fourth, Jimmy P's LLC owned by Steve Pepin requested an on-sale intoxicating liquor and Sunday liquor license to be located at sixteen hundred eleventh Avenue Northeast under the name of Jimmy P's LLC, doing business as Jimmy P's. He's had a background check with the police department to pass that, has a certificate of occupancy and meets all the city requirements for the liquor license. And I'm requesting, uh, a motion to approve his license to be sent to the state. So moved.
Second. We got a motion and a second discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I have a question for Mr. Pepin, if, if I can ask him. Uh, is, is this, uh, your Jimmy P's, is it gonna be open to the public? Uh, is it a private club, what?
It's gonna be open to the public.
It is, okay. And is there a restaurant with this, or is it just a club, or?
It's a restaurant.
It is, okay.
Food is required within intoxicating liquor license.
That's what I thought, yes. Okay, thank you.
Roll call.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
Sholdes?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Gilbertson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
And Fagerly?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Motion passes. Next is a request for a special city council meeting. Uh, call on, uh, city administrator Leslie.
Good evening, Council. Uh, we are asking for this special council meeting next week. We believe that we will have our insurance contracts for health insurance, uh, this week. And so we would like to have, um, council approve those contracts so that we could now have that information out to employees as early as possible for our, uh, upcoming event of registration and such an open enrollment. So we would propose either Wednesday, October twenty-ninth, or Thursday, the thirtieth. And this would just be conducted at the city hall. We don't expect this to be a very lengthy meeting. It would only have the insurance contract on the agenda at five-thirty or six o'clock in the evening.
I can't do the thirtieth at night. Is there any option to do it in the morning or at noon?
I'm open to council discussion.
Is it Tuesday or Wednesday?
It's a Wednesday or Thursday.
Wednesday doesn't work unless it's in the afternoon.
Wednesday doesn't work for me unless it's a morning or afternoon.
Okay, let's go Thursday.
I would need at least six Saturday.
I can't do Thursday night.
I'm leaving it all up to you.
I'm not available either day. I'm in Oklahoma next week.
You're out the entire week in Oklahoma?
I'm not. I am here Tuesday.
Tuesday's too early, wait?
I'm not here on Tuesday. I'll be out of town until Wednesday afternoon.
And Tuesday doesn't work for you?
Thursday morning?
That doesn't work for Steve or Tom.
Or Vicky, I'm guessing days.
I've got six Saturdays a week.
So it sounds like Thursday and we have to choose between losing Audrey or Tom. Because you can't do it in the evening and you can only do it in the evening.
What time do you start in the morning?
We gotta push back an hour to seven-thirty now. This was really messing.
I'm in the office at seven.
We used to start at six-thirty in the morning.
Seven AM, I'm all for it.
Seven AM, Thursday morning?
Am I gonna be out of there in fifteen minutes?
Sure. You just make the motion when you come in, you're all good.
I can do seven Thursday morning.
Okay.
I'm up by then.
You're on the whole week?
Uh, I, I get on an airplane at about six-thirty on Wednesday night and I get back in the morning about noon on Friday.
You could go Friday if you want.
Friday's Halloween.
We could go Friday.
I can't do Friday.
I can't do Friday.
I'll be, next Friday, yes, I'll be back. I'm back Wednesday. I'm back next Wednesday.
I can't do Friday.
Friday.
Say Friday's Halloween. All you guys are young kids. You gotta do, go to a city council meeting on?
Let's have an AM. My kids aren't trick-or-treating at 7:00 AM.
I can't do 7:00 AM on Friday either way. I'll be in an airplane.
7:00 AM, Thursday.
Does 7:00 AM Thursday work for everybody?
Works for me.
Except for Steve.
We're not gonna catch Steve.
It's a matter of. Whether you're doing it Wednesday or Thursday or not.
Does the next week, does it have to be that week? Can I sneak into?
We would like it that week because we are trying to get open enrollment the following week. So we would like it as soon as possible.
And we have a city council meeting on the 3rd, don't we? That following Monday?
Yes, but we have to get open enrollment already. And that means.
Okay, this is on Wednesday the 5th. We can't push that any further. We've already pushed it out. So we have to have time to get the plan built into our online portal.
Thursday, 7:00 AM?
Does that work for you, Vicky? In the morning?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not ideal, but.
Yeah.
A lot of costs.
Steve, this would be less than ideal. Is it possible for him to zoom in or on Teams? Would that be?
Yeah. I love Starlink where I'm at, so.
You can do that.
I'd rather not do that, but.
Right.
But I can.
It's up to you.
So 7:00 AM Thursdays? Need a motion to that effect.
I'll make a motion that we meet on Thursday, the 30th, at 7:00 AM at city hall.
Second.
Will we, will you be sending us information for that meeting?
We will send you the agenda. I don't know what information we'll have prior to that, but we will certainly have something for you.
So you were, you were recently reaching out to look for, for bids on this, correct? Correct. So is there going to be choices presented to us at this meeting, or will it?
We're not sure what we're gonna get this yet. We haven't gotten everything, we haven't gotten information in yet. So if we have choices, it will be, we know one choice is the current plan we have, which is PEEPs at a little over 20% increase, or the alternative. That would be the choices right now.
Okay. We're not gonna, like, we're gonna need a decision at that meeting, it sounds like. It's nothing like we could.
Yes, you would make that decision. You would make the contract decision that night.
Okay.
You're just making the contract decision, what the contract entails.
That'll take 15 minutes?
Should. I, I mean, it's.
Yes or no?
Yeah, I, you know, we're gonna, we'll have a recommendation, but, you know, it's.
Bids come out when?
They're gonna be coming in this week.
This week?
Yes. We haven't.
Roll call.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
Sholdes?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Gilbertson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Do we have any announcements? If not, we're going to go into closed session. Close meeting pursuant to Minnesota statute 13D.05 subdivision 3C to develop.